I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Before we start our favorite part of the meeting, which is Student of the Month, we have a couple of recognitions. Nobody here is going to do recognition? We need to have Matt and Angela English and Amy and John Jennings to come up, please.
There's Mike.
Thank you. I'd like you right over here. Right in front of the cameras. Now, I'm the lucky one that gets to read this wonderful information about you guys, so I feel privileged. And I'm going to make sure I do read it, so that I don't forget anything. So, tonight, we want to celebrate four very special individuals: Matt and Angela, Amy and John. We want to recognize you because for years, well, we'll tell a little bit of background, for years, the Beech Grove community has held Relay for Life at the middle school track and football field. Relay for Life is a program of the American Cancer Society and is held across the world to honor cancer survivors, remember loved ones, and also fight back against a disease that has taken way too many of our friends and relatives. Relay for Life teams fight back up, our teams camp out overnight, and they take turns walking or running around the middle school track. And there's always a walker or runner on the track at all times, because just like cancer never takes a rest, neither do the walkers and runners. The event includes a survivor lap, when survivors walk to celebrate their victory over cancer, and a caregiver lap to recognize those who have provided care to cancer patients. In addition, there is a beautiful display of luminary bags and candles that are placed around the track to honor loved ones who have passed away or who are fighting the disease. The Fight Back Ceremony closes the event. Relay participants take a final lap and pledge to take action and spread awareness of cancer research, awareness, and prevention. The English family, which is right here, they faced cancer head-on. Matt experienced a life-threatening form of cancer and came out as a very super survivor. None of us in Beech Grove City Schools or the Beech Grove community will ever forget the inspiration provided by Matt, Angela, and his extended family, when we felt as though we walked alongside them, by reading Angela's Carrie Bridge notes about Matt's surgery and rehabilitation, and by all of us proudly displaying our "We Before Me" shirts, the quote that is often voiced by Matt. "We wanted to inspire and encourage both of you; however, you were the ones that inspired and encouraged us." And then I want to talk about the Jennings family. Although they have no personal or direct family connection to cancer, which we can all be thankful for, the Jennings family started their relationship with Relay for Life because they wanted to foster a spirit of volunteerism within their own family. What a great lesson for kids. Amy stated that she knows that cancer impacts many people, including the English family, who she is very close to and greatly admires. The Jennings feel like this is one way that they can give back. After this year's Relay for Life, Coach English, which for those of you that don't know, Matt is our athletic director here at the high school, so he's all about the athletics. Coach English, on behalf of the Beech Grove Hornets team, was presented with the Comeback Award to recognize the team as most improved over the previous year. So, I think that's for all the efforts, probably fundraising, number of people, all the things put together. Matt credits that Comeback Award to Amy and John Jennings. As he stated, Amy Jennings and her family have toiled away at this event for many years, and without their determination, the Beech Grove Hornets team would not exist. A second award, a more personal one, was also presented to Matt, the Super Survivor Award. And indeed, Matt is a super survivor, and Angela is his super survivor partner. They're a great team. So, for leading the way to provide awareness, support, and recognition of those currently fighting cancer and those who are survivors, Dr. Kaiser would like to present, and I should like to have their principals, Erin and Steve, you would come up too to help, would like to present you with a very special award from Beech Grove City Schools.
Before we do so, I'd like to recognize that Amy's not here tonight because she's at a girls' mom volleyball dinner at the Texas Roadhouse. So, but what a special nod for her, not only do what she does as a leader in this area, but a leader in the classroom, for she is truly a superstar at Beech Grove City Schools. So, she would like to be here, but she's dining with the girls at the volleyball team, so I'd like to recognize in her absence. For Amy and John Jennings, for their dedication and commitment to our students, staff, and our community, the higher levels of service is traveled with integrity, compassion, and understanding. Kids do not know how much we know until they know how much we care. So, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
English family, and do you want to take, accept this? Well, again, appreciate their work. Again, Matt's our athletic director, head basketball coach, was a great science teacher for us, and taking over some leadership at Hornet Park and the office, which is a fun job, and what they do. So, we appreciate all your hard work and your dedication. Reject it again.
Can you all get together? Let me take a picture. You too, John. All of you, yeah. And Dr. Kaiser?
Before we start the Student of the Month, I'd like to invite Mayor Buckley to come up and please. We partner so much with the city of Beech Grove in so many endeavors, and a very exciting thing has taken place is that the mayor in his office has applied for a grant, and they received the grant, and we're just very proud to be a small part of that, and I'll turn over to Mayor Buckley to talk about the grant and what's taken place with that. Thank you very much, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Good evening. Very briefly, the city was awarded a grant from the Federal Highway Improvement Program, $685,000, and that is to replace signs throughout the city and the posts throughout the city of Beech Grove. But, and it comes from the Metropolitan Planning Organization, MPO, and those folks take money left over from federal projects and find other projects to do with it. So, Dr. Kaiser and some others have been talking to me since I became mayor about the concern for kids walking to school, so both at South Grove and here, especially behind your building here. So, we got together and talked with some people at the MPO, and we knew that there was going to be some more money coming available this fall. The folks at Crossroads Engineering, Brian Tomlin Michael, and the public course director, got together and they come up with an idea of where they should put sidewalks, and it would be under the label of Safe Routes to School. So, we did it, and I tell everybody I had very, very little to do with this. It was those three people who did the bulk of the work. All I did was sign a form, so. But anyway, it worked. We were originally told we weren't going to get it, and then the phone rang a couple of weeks ago, and Mike Neering from the MPO said that we wanted to do all three of your projects. So, that's wonderful news for the city. It's wonderful news for the school district. I think everybody knows how dangerous it is out here behind this building. So, this Friday, I am going to meet again with Lori Meiser. Lori is the public course director for the city of Indianapolis, and we're going to sit down and talk about doing some other work in Beech Grove. And I think I'll mention this to her, because Turf Run Avenue is actually under the jurisdiction of the city of Indianapolis, so any monies that would be spent would come from the city of Indianapolis. And maybe we could talk to them about doing some more work out there to make it safer, not only for students, but for senior citizens in this area. But very briefly, I want to give the board an update on new business and assess valuation, because that's what this is all about. You can't improve your school unless we grow as a city, and I want to tell you that within the last year, we have lost four businesses on Main Street, but we picked up eight new businesses. In Park Emerson, which is right behind the Kentucky Fried Chicken, we are now home to three international companies, and just this week alone already, we've had three new commercial permits for construction for new buildings on Emerson Avenue. So, there's a lot going on. Our friends at ADM Melling, which is out here on Beville, you may be aware that they've, they're about three-quarters of the way through their largest expansion in the history of their company, and what that means to Beech Grove and Beech Grove Schools is once they get on the tax rolls after April of 2014, that's about a $30 million hit for our AV, which that will raise our AV that much, and it will allow you folks to make your school system better. And then, the last couple of weeks, I've been working with ADM out of Kansas City, because once this is over, they, I think they're going to do some more work in Beech Grove, working with Mayor Ballard's office. He's been very good to work for and work with. And out here behind you, there's a citizens' LNG plant, the big tank. They used to store, they used to freeze natural gas, and then in the peak months, they would release it for home heat. Well, the climate's changing, so they're going to get out of that business, and they're going to convert it to fuel for vehicles. So, when they get done, you'll be seeing tankers come in out of there. We'll have natural gas, like a financial gas, to fuel vehicles. Okay, that's good. Okay, but what's it mean? Well, they're in the process of investing between $30 and $40 billion in the city of Beech Grove. That's what's good about it. And they are good friends with the cities and will continue to work with them. That helps you folks. And then, finally, I want to just very briefly talk to Dr. Kaiser about this before this meeting. Franciscan Alliance has petitioned the city to hear zoning bearings, or zoning, rezoning classification for their property there at 1600 Albany. What they want to do, they want to change the zoning from, or from special use to commercial. I don't know what they're going to do yet. I think I know, but they haven't told me officially. But if that's the case, that will be good news for the city, and that will be good news for you folks. I'll go back to Mitchell Walker next week and meet with the executive officers of Franciscan, and maybe I'll understand what they're going to do. But that's all that's going on. There's a lot going on. You know that commercial properties pay the bills, and that we can't rely on residential properties to make it right. So, the more that we can do as a city to raise our AV, and next year will be the first time in five years that our AV has actually increased. So, that is a good sign, and so I'm happy about it, because we all want good schools, we all want good libraries. And so, that's it. Good to see you folks. Appreciate it.
So, we'll start off with Mr. Gerhart from the middle school.
Good evening. I want to give you an update on our FFA membership this year. We have 40 due paying members, and we have quite a few others that are wanting to join but haven't paid the dues yet, so we're hoping to get up around 100 members in our middle school FFA, which is outstanding. Next week, again, we are offering our intercession classes. Mrs. Blazer, once again this year, will be teaching tolerance to her Understanding the Holocaust course, and that culminates with a day-long trip to meet an actual survivor at the Candles Museum in Terre Haute. And this year, she has 48 kids enrolled in that class. We will also be holding and hosting a volleyball skills clinic, skills camp for grades four through eight, and there are 42 kids in that. And finally, for intercession, we invited 70 students to participate in math, language arts, and reading remediation. We just finished our first round of Acuity Predictive, and that gives us a good idea of a roadmap of where to go, and is a very good predictor of how our kids are going to score on I-Step, and something our teachers reference often as they move through the year and prepare for I-Step. And this year, finally, we are focusing on our school goal. That's going to be vocabulary. Our data on I-Step Plus indicates that's an area of need for us, so our teachers are using our tablet technology, which is up and running. They use it every period, every day, to do quick exit tickets and warm-ups, and it gives them instant feedback and allows them to adjust their instruction on the spot. It is outstanding for our teachers and our students. The last thing I want to update you about will lead into our Student of the Month. So, Mallory Storms, if you'd like to come up, and Coach Eckstein, if you'd like to come up. This, Coach, if you want to hold down. Great. This is the trophy that Coach Eckstein and her team won on Saturday afternoon, finishing first in Marion County. About 130 runners, correct? And that's Ben Davis, that's Franklin Central, that's every middle school in Marion County. We placed specific runners, second, third. Mallory finished 11th, and we have two more runners that finished 28th and 39th. So, we want to congratulate the Beech Grove Middle Schools' undefeated girls' cross-country team. Mrs. Eckstein also has Mallory on her team, which is Team Galileo, so I'm going to let you read the writing.
The Galileo team is proud to select Mallory Storms as Student of the Month. Mallory embodies the qualities of an epistemic Beech Grove student in the classroom and on the athletic field. She is a true representation of a student athlete. Mallory comes to class every day prepared to learn. She is diligent in her studies, where she has straight A's in every class. Mallory is always willing to volunteer and has a great sense of humor to add insight to class discussions. Her compassion for others makes her an asset in every class, where she takes the initiative to help explain concepts to fellow classmates. Mallory's classroom demeanor makes her a dream to teach. Mallory is also a talented athlete who leads by example on the field. She is a member of the girls' undefeated cross-country team that won the Marion County Championship Me, where she placed 11 out of 130 runners. The girls' basketball team that was undefeated for the 2012-2013 season, the girls' softball team. Mallory tucks sports as she does the books, always pushing herself to reach her potential and striving to achieve perfection. Mallory continues her drive with school involvement, where she helps anchor daily in the school production of news center. She leads the announcements, weather, and sports reporting. Mallory was also elected FFA Discovery Chapter President by her peers, showing her willingness to achieve greatness and learn beyond the classroom. The Galileo team is honored to recognize Mallory Storm. Her drive, compassion, talent, and work ethic make her shine. Beech Grove Middle School benefits from her leadership.
Mr. Cox, Beech Grove High School.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I'd like to start by talking to you a little bit about an update on our Hornet Pantry. This is a vision Shirley Folks, one of our staff members, home school advisor for the district, that she came to me this summer, along with Kathy Lowe, and said, "Hey, what can we do? Can we do something to build a pantry in Beech Grove High School?" We looked and looked and looked, and matter of fact, it's right in the room right over there, that we created for her pantry. And we are currently serving four families in Beech Grove City Schools. Shirley has been working extremely hard on gathering different clothes, and she sent out emails about anybody who wanted to donate clothes, and now we have so many clothes. We don't know what to do with them, so she's now moving toward canned goods, any type of canned goods, macaroni and cheese, syrup, things like that, that we can build a pantry for that. She'd appreciate that. So, if anybody's interested in donating anything, you can either call here at the high school and to the front office, or Shirley Folks. But she wants to say thank you to all the people in Beech Grove that have donated items to that pantry and that cause, and I want to say thank you to her. She's just done an outstanding job to have a vision and really get down in the knitting griddy and get things done to build that pantry. So, we're very proud of what she's done for our school and our district. A couple of things with our band. Our band started out there in contest season, going to Pineville in September, and came back as grand champions. They were first in music, visual effects, guitar, and percussion, and so we kicked off the year to a very good start. Then they moved to Warren Central in September, and they were first place in all those captions again. And so, we thought things were going pretty well, and we moved on to Avon High School, and we did it again. We're first place again. It wasn't until Danville that we ran into a couple of our Genemies, which are, I guess, our biggest competitors, which is Edgewood and Western, and they, we performed, and pouring down rank. It was, they soaked. But we came out second overall in that competition as well. This Saturday, they're heading to Center Grove and performing at 4:30, if anybody's interested in going to that. Athletics, tonight, we have our boys' and girls' cross-country team that are headed to La Pelle. They're running out the ICC meet. Tomorrow night, we have freshman volleyball at Tech, and our boys' soccer team start the sectional trek through the United States Tournament, and it's at Warren Central at 5 o'clock, and we play Chitard. So, that's over at Warren Central. Thursday, we have a JV and varsity girls' volleyball match that goes to Speedway, so if anybody would like to go there, it's 6:30. Our 5:30 start with the JV. Also, Thursday night, our girls are starting their trek through the sectional tournament, and also going to Warren Central, and that's versus Arsenal Tech, and we play them at 7 o'clock. Friday is a big event. We have our varsity football game. We're playing Triton Central. It's a senior night. We'll be recognizing the football team and cheerleaders and band seniors. We also are doing the Veterans Appreciation Night, so several people have probably seen this little flyer up around town. We have Joe Wolfla in Barbecue Heaven, I believe Walgreens, and a couple of our sponsors are putting together to celebrate and say appreciation to the veterans of any wars in the United States. So, we're having a dinner, barbecue dinner, from 5 to 7. It'll be out on the track, and then at the halftime of the game, we'll be recognizing all the veterans for that event. Saturday, we also have varsity volleyball going to North Montgomery again. That's an invitation. That's an all-day thing. And then our boys' soccer team, if we continue to win, we will be going back to Warren for a 11-man match. And our girls' soccer section is also at Warren. We'll be playing at 1 o'clock on Saturday afternoon, as long as we keep pointing. We have a couple of important people I wanted to introduce to you today, tonight, but one of them isn't here, obviously. That's Donna Hall. She was our September Educator of the Month, and one of the person who nominated wrote this. Donna has taught special education here at Beech Grove High School for 30 years. She struggles between department head chairs, or juggles, actually, department hair duties, teaches basic skills classes, keeps up with all the IET paperwork she has to do for every student. She has to have really close communication with every parent at all times, and she must also adhere to all the laws that go along with that position, and we have multiple conferences with students as well. She's not only a very conscientious teacher, but she's a very compassionate person. She always drops whatever she's doing, no matter how important it is to counsel a student that's having a personal issue. John is generally cares about each and every student with whom she works. She spends hours of time on her own at home designing new ways to keep up with her student interest in learning, and she's always willing to try out new technology things tied to that classroom. And for these and many other reasons, the faculty at Beech Grove has picked Donna Hall as selected as the Educator of the Month for September, and the person who wrote that was Merrily Crook. The first person I'd like to introduce tonight is Athena. Athena, come on up. And we're doing something new this year. We're also recognizing here at the board, we've seen nine students of the month. Athena is the granddaughter of Connie Cross and the niece of Greg Woods. Athena is a student at Beech Grove High School. Every morning, and I don't see her every morning, but almost, when I come in, when I see her at school in the hallway, she's always got a big smile on her face, and she always says, "What?"
Hi, Mr. Cox.
Says that every morning, with that smile. So, she's a pleasure to have at Beech Grove High School. We're very proud of her. She goes down to C9 in Culinary Arts, and she is the C9 Student of the Month for this month. And so, her teacher, Chef Smith, wrote this. Each day, Athena is in the kitchen. She exhibits professionalism and general kindness, and her dedication to our program was evident when she volunteered to participate in the 2013 Central 9 Advisory Board Dinner. So, she's always doing the extra thing down at C9 as well here at Beech Grove High School. So, Athena is our C9 Student of the Month. And our second Student of the Month here at the high school is Holly Cox. Come on up, Holly. Holly is the daughter of Jeffrey and A. Cox and Angela Cox. She is a senior. She has a 4.05 GPA, and she ranks sixth in her class at this point. She's involved in choir, Spanish club, Spanish Honor Society, and National Honor Society here at the high school. She works part-time at lamping cleaners. She volunteers three to seven times a month at the Hunger Incorporated Food Pantry as well. She also collects and donates stuffed animals for the Catholic Charities Christmas House in Terre Haute, Indiana. She plans to go to college. She's applied at a couple places. She said she really wants to go to Rose Holman, but also Purdue's in there, so that's a good thing. But she's also Manchester Hanover in Indiana. What she wants to do is to go and concentrate on some area of chemistry. One of the comments a teacher wrote was Holly has taken a very tough schedule this semester and is always involved in several extracurricular activities as well. Holly went to the first botany camp this summer, came away with several possibilities in terms of college majors. She seems to always have a smile on her face and is a positive role model for our students and other students at Beech Grove High School, and that's Mr. Banks, so our Student of the Month, Holly Cox.
Ms. Kellner, part of Richmond Academy.
Couple of success stories I'd like to share with you tonight before we get to Student of the Month. We started off at a pretty quick pace, and our students have been working very hard. So far this nine weeks, or during the first nine weeks, we had two students that completed the requirements for graduation, and both of those students completed the requirements for a Core 40 diploma. So, we want to graduate Tyler Fisher and Mark Jean-Marie, who completed their diploma during that time. We also want to commend all of We also want to commend all of our students. During the first nine weeks, they finished 53 courses and earned 53 credits toward graduation, and those are academic credits and do not include the elective credits that they're working on. I also want to thank again Mrs. Probus and the Hornet Park community for opening their doors to us again, to allow us to volunteer, not only in their classrooms, but also on their buses. Some upcoming events for us. This Friday, some of our students will be visiting the Indiana State Museum. We also have students who will be attending a movie at the IMAX, and we have a group of students who will be volunteering at Leener's Food Bank. We've seen a lot of personal growth this year with our students. I think that kind of shows in the amount of credits that they have earned this nine weeks. So one of those students I want to introduce to you, Megan Engel. Megan Engel is our September Student of the Month. Megan is a junior and attends the HEA in the afternoon. She's the daughter of Sherri Hickman. Megan was nominated by staff for her diligent effort toward academic success. She demonstrates effective study skills each day and exemplifies the characteristics of a successful HEA student. As a result, by the end of the nine-week term, Megan had earned five academic credits. She has worked hard to progress academically and has demonstrated her commitment to both academic and personal growth. In the future, Megan is interested in the medical field and hopefully would like to become a CNA upon graduation. Mr. Cahill commented that Megan's attitude, her work ethic, and perseverance is commendable. Likewise, Mr. Lance stated that he was very impressed with Megan's accomplishments, earning two history credits this term. Megan goes about her daily work quietly and efficiently. She is respectful to staff and students and makes a positive contribution to our school community. We congratulate Megan for her commitment to personal growth, and we look forward to her ongoing success at the HEA.
Ms. Reed, before you begin, where one has it, today is your 29th birthday.
It is my 29th birthday today.
So on the count of three, everyone is going to sing you a happy birthday. One, two, three.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you.
It is funny at South Grove, though, because they announced that it was my birthday today. And how old are you, 17? I was like, absolutely, yeah, whatever you say, I'm good with, as long as it's under 30. So I am way over 30. Been at Beech Grove 25 years, if that kind of leads you to believe, you know, how old I am.
You started teaching, what, 10?
I was 10. Actually, I was 21, so, yeah. So I've been at Beech Grove my whole teaching career, and I'm very proud of it and very proud of my Beech Grove family, for sure. I wanted to tell a little bit about South Grove. Last Tuesday, we had our Family Academic Fair. The theme was snickering at South Grove, because we were trying to get people to snicker and laugh and enjoy themselves. And although we didn't get an official count, we think there were about 600 people there present. And I wanted to thank South Grove teacher Stacy Johnson for getting it all organized, and it was quite a task to get everybody organized. I wanted to thank the Beech Grove Education Foundation for supporting the event with some funding that we needed. I wanted to thank South Grove's art teacher, Luanne Piper. She arranged for Azuuk's puppets to come, and they did two performances during the day, and then they did a performance that evening for the families. Then they went into the cafeteria and set up tables, and children were able to make puppets with pencils and all kinds of whatever, whatever they had laying out. So it was a great event. Each South Grove teacher had learning activities set up near their classroom in the hallways so that parents and students could play together and learn together. There were opportunities for families to have fun all over the building, including a book walk. Everybody got snickerdoodle cookies, and there were 13 gift baskets that we raffled off. Each student received a free book and a free set of math flashcards. And this is a very important event to us, to bring our families in, to encourage parents to be involved with their students in their learning, and also to show them that it's easy to learn and it's fun to learn. You just have to look for those avenues. So very impressed with that. And I know Mrs. Stevens was there, and it just was a great evening, and we look forward to doing that again next year as well. I wanted to let everybody know that our canned food drive ends tomorrow. We are collecting cans for Servants Heart. And I wanted to thank Total Restoration. They are donating a pizza party to the classroom that brings in the most cans. So they approached me about having a canned food drive before I realized Mrs. Folkes was getting food together for the Hornet Food Pantry, so we'll do that later. But this is going to Servants Heart, which also services the Beech Grove community. And I want Rebecca Lamb to come up, please. Isn't she adorable? Absolutely adorable. Are you nervous? Don't be. Rebecca Lamb is South Grove Student of the Month. She is the daughter of Erin and Teresa Lamb. Mrs. Omech, Rebecca's language arts teacher, says that she is not only a model student academically, but also socially. She consistently gives every assignment her all and mentors her peers around her. She is polite, sweet-natured, social, helpful, inquisitive, and hardworking, and she demonstrates all of these characteristics while maintaining a humble demeanor. Rebecca is a leader in the band. She plays the flute. In music class, she always puts forth her best effort. In PE, she demonstrates good sportsmanship and assists her classmates. She's an enthusiastic, or she was an enthusiastic member of Girls on the Run last year, and she's a member of the undefeated middle school cross-country team. Mrs. Bear, Rebecca's math teacher, says that she truly cares about learning, sharing, and growing. She comes ready to learn with a smile and a positive attitude. We all look forward to seeing Rebecca and the success that awaits her. She is the shining example of South Grove's model, ready, responsible, and respectful every day. So congratulations, Rebecca.
Good evening, everyone. I want to speak briefly just about an event that we've had, an event that we're going to have, and then I want to speak about Mrs. Wolf just for a couple minutes before I introduce our Student of the Month. I want to celebrate the outstanding attendance that we had at our grandparents' celebration last Thursday and last Friday. Between the two days, we had between 500 and 600 special guests come to school. We had 300 seats in the audience both days, and both days they were nearly filled. Special recognition to a few people. Mrs. Edder, our music teacher, had not one, but two programs. So the second graders had a program on Thursday. The third graders had a different program on Friday, and they were both outstanding. And just a special shout-out to the Gastonians at Central, who in 45 minutes turned a cafeteria full of boys and girls eating their lunch into a cafeteria ready to go for our program. So we were really, really pleased with that. I'm going to announce for Mrs. Probus, she and I are happy that after a one-year hiatus, Spooktacular is returning for our boys and girls, and that will be on Tuesday, October the 29th, which seems a long way off, but with the two-week intercession, we are math y scrambling now to make sure everything is ready when we come back. And that will be from 5:30 to 7:00. It's for all Hornet Park and Central students, and it will be at Hornet Park. And that's the safe trick-or-treating event that we do for our students. I want to give some special recognition tonight to Mrs. Trudy Wolf, who's our school counselor. Mrs. Wolf works with the boys and girls individually, in small groups. She teaches lessons to whole groups of boys and girls every Tuesday. But she also does lots of special event planning for us. Yesterday, she organized the Wear the Blue shirts for the stop-down bullying that spread throughout the whole district. She organized our food drive, which is this week for Servants Heart. So we'll be collecting those canned and boxed goods until this Friday, the 11th. And then on Monday, November the 4th, she organizes our whole Red Ribbon Week, which is the Drug Prevention Awareness Week for our students. So she packs a lot into these three or four weeks, and I wanted to give her a special shout-out. We're all so appreciative of her hard work. The reason I'm here, though, is to introduce Constance Prentice, that she's going to come over right now, and she is our September Student of the Month. Constance is a second grader in Mr. New Year House's class. He says she is a pleasure to have in class. She is an active participant, follows directions, and always has a positive attitude. Constance goes to Mrs. LeFavers for reading, and she states that she is kind-hearted and hardworking. Her smile and enthusiasm to learn make her a joy to have in class. In applied technology, Mrs. Weishaw can report that Constance has a fun personality and is always ready to learn. Finally, Mrs. Dode, who's one of our Title I teachers who works with Constance, and she's here tonight, reports that Constance is happy and positive. She pays close attention to directions and gives her best effort when working. She asks questions, shares thoughts, and gives answers when working with a small group. She's also thoughtful of her classmates. She tries to help the others stay focused and on task. Constance is a terrific student who understands the value of learning. It is with great pleasure that I introduce Constance Prentice, our September Student of the Month.
Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure to join you tonight and share a little bit about what's taking place at Hornet Park. As Mr. Buckler shared, we're excited about the upcoming Spooktacular, so we hope to see you all there. But a couple of other things I'd like to inform you about this evening. Again, it seems far off, but it will be here before our next meeting and ever so quickly considering our break. But that first week of November, the 4th through the 8th, will be our canned food drive at Hornet Park, so we invite that participation. Also, there will be our grandparents' celebrations for two evenings. Wednesday, November 6th, from 6 to 7 in the evening, will be our kindergarten celebration. And Thursday, November 7th, from 6 to 7, will be our first grade celebration. The evening will involve basically four stations, one of which is called Books with a Buddy. So you and your special guest will share a book in the classroom. We have a video-recorded musical presentation that Mrs. Edder, our music teacher, puts on. We will also have the opportunity to explore the book fair, sorry, grandparents. And then finally, we have a scavenger hunt through the building, where you get to kind of tour the facility and see Hornet Park at its finest. So we hope that there are lots of special guests that are able to join us for those two evenings. Additionally, I wanted to share with you, our school plan has been set. Mr. New Year Hart shared a little bit about theirs as well. It is all centered around reading as well as it was last year, but this year we picked a different goal strand. We are working on literary and informational texts. So we're going to start, our next cycle will be kind of on-print concepts, getting that foundational piece in place, and then building on from that with comprehension. So we look forward to, and Jam Peck, you're really focused on our reading through the test system. So glad to report on that. Then finally, before we get to our Student of the Month, I wanted to just recognize that parent-teacher conferences are going on presently, probably in all of our buildings, but across the parking lot, you'll still notice lots of activity at Hornet Park. So I wanted to thank all of the families who have made that a priority, and then encourage any that are scheduled for the remainder of the week to please come. It's a wonderful chance to be on the same page about student performance and what's taking place at school. All right, so now that which I'm most excited to share, I would like to introduce our Student of the Month, Riker Laterno. So Riker, come on up. All right, I have some wonderful words to share about Riker from Mrs. Sutton. Before I read it, have you noticed that she always provides information for both Central and Hornet Park? That just shows how much she loves our kiddos. She says she absolutely adores Riker. He is a complete gentleman and a wonderful little boy. He always provides behavior that exemplifies the qualities of a true Hornet. He's kind, thoughtful, polite, patient, and just a pleasure to have in class. We are so lucky to have him as a student. From his classroom teacher, Mrs. Gag, she says Riker is always a great role model. He raises his hand and waits patiently for me to call on him. He's very kind to his peers, and he says good morning as soon as he walks in the door. He is one of the few that remembers to say please and thank you with no reminders. He's a hard worker and never gives up, even if he has to struggle a little bit. He's a great pick for Student of the Month. I'm so proud of him. And then I recorded also that he can always be caught doing the right thing. Now, Hornet Park, we talk about walking through the hallways with your seatbelt and your bubble, so that your hands are still and your mouth is quiet. And the only time he'll take down his seatbelt and bubble is to tell you good morning or hi, or greet you accordingly. And so he always has a very genuine greeting and smile to greet peers and adults in the building. So Hornet Park is blessed and proud to present Riker Laterno as Student of the Month.
Mr. Collins, could we start with a curriculum update, please?
Since our last meeting, the ISTEAD results did come out. I have to remind everyone that this was the year where we had a lot of interruptions. Some of the kids took the test and were kicked out in the middle of the test. Some of them went in and couldn't start, and it was delayed. That's why the state of Indiana took so long getting the results. The growth results are not in yet, so we'll be talking about those later. We did have several kids who the state of Indiana decided their tests were invalid. They used two criteria. One was looking at their scores last year, whether they were way out of line. And the second thing they looked at was how long it took them to take the test. If it was over very quickly or it took them a very long period, those two factors determine whether the state of Indiana was going to disallow the results for those tests. So right now, the scores are very questionable in many areas, but we've got to take what we got. So I thought I'd share a little bit with you. So the first two charts that I provided for you shows last year's results and this year's results. I have to remind you that these are different kids. So like in third grade, third graders are now fourth graders, so we're comparing last year's third graders, or this year's fourth graders with last year's third graders. So it's not the same people. If you look at the first chart in math, you notice that our lower elementary did go down a little bit, and our upper elementary and middle school went up a little bit. So it's kind of one side to the other. I don't know if the younger kids were affected by the getting kicked out or not, but that's kind of interesting. It was not enough, though, variation with one side going up and the other down. We kind of were very similar to the results we had last year. In our language arts, we're very pleased to see the third grade went way up there, and that helped. The orange is this 2013, and the black is the year before that. Also, I'm very pleased to see that eighth grade come out. Again, the variance is very small, so our results were very similar to last year's. If we go to the next two, the next one, it looks at our high school. The two tests, which are considered ISTEAD tests, are biology and English 10, not biology, algebra and English 10. And then we also usually get a biology grade. You'll notice that our Algebra 1 and our English 10 did go down a little bit, but our biology shot up. That might be your emphasis in the sciences here at the high school. All of this put together, I wanted to share with you what Marion County looked like, and we basically did not change our ranking in the county. We're still a solid third, above the state of Indiana in both cases. So we're about the same place we were last year with a little variance here and there. The last page kind of puts it all together. Our math scores did go down about 1.4% for an average of 83.9, which is, I love it when we're in the 80s. So even though we went down a little bit, we're still in the 80s. And grade levels 6 and 8 increased, and grades 3, 4, 5, and 7 decreased a little bit. The language arts didn't go down hardly, any, 0.6%. We have an average of 79.7, which I like to round to 80, because I like to see both of them be in the 80s. So if we do it that way, we were in the 80s of both of them. We had grades 3, 5, and 8 increase, and grades 4, 6, and 7 decrease. We're still third in Marion County, which is the ranking we've had in the last three or four years. Would love to move up to second maybe one of these years, we will. If we look at the same kids, when they go from one grade into the next If we look at the same kids, when they go from one grade and the next to the next, if we look at that, the fourth graders who went to fifth grade, the sixth graders who went to seventh grade, the seventh graders who went to eighth grade, in math, all of those increased their scores with the same kids. If we look at language arts, the fifth graders that went to sixth grade and the seventh graders who went to eighth grade in language arts also increased. So those are the areas that increase their scores if we look at the same kids. Next time, I'll share the growth scores with you if the state of Indiana decides to release them.
Kit, if I can make a comment about the improvement on our middle school? I think a year and a half ago, Tom came up with the idea of having Rita Bass work with her language arts and I think we've seen some real positive gains there. Tom, would you like to make any comments about the efforts and some of the strategies that have taken place with that?
Well, I talked a little bit about focus on vocabulary this year. That's also been the case the last couple of years with our school goal. Last year was problem-solving. Think of that as a math kind of concept, but that's not necessarily limited to math. And our language arts teachers did a great job to advocate that. And then the year before, it was so focused on informational practice. So focus, concentration certainly, I think, is shown to help us out.
Yeah, a special thing with Rita, Rita's now working with language arts, really from grade four through 12. She's working with high school staff members and actually observing and providing feedback on what she sees from a language arts standpoint. When Rita was in sixth grade, our test scores were at the 90% time and she was one of the key, one of the pride key person to move that forward. So she's out of the classroom as a teacher and is really working with teachers in grades four through 12. And we really see, expect to see some even stronger impact on the 10th grade and of course assessment and just overall our language arts. So really working on articulation, which was a need that we had and working with Kit and Laura, Rita's really leading the charge for that, especially literacy and the writing and writing across the curriculum. So we're excited about what's taking place there. Again, a special thanks to all our principals and teachers for their hard work. You know, we're continuing to make gains.
Do we have a tap-up there? Do we want to go directly to the quality of staff development, Dr. Ian?
You bet. My update had three really brief items, the first being fall intercession. You've heard a little bit about that already this evening, some of the activities that are going on next week. It's just stunning that next week is fall intercession already. Most of our programming is happening next week, which is the 14th through the 18th, and then we have a couple of activities that next week following. We're going to have boys and girls who will be engaged in volleyball, in wrestling. We have nearly 100 students who are signed up for Learn to Swim lessons with Oscar and his swim team, Mr. Bush Collins, I should say, and his swimmers are going to do Learn to Swim lessons for our kiddos. We of course have the Holocaust study and field trip to the Candles Museum that Mr. Dearhart talked about. We have college visit trips happening to Ball State, to IUPUC, to Franklin College. We have the Buzz Club program which is happening for our kiddos who are involved in Buzz Club and that'll take place at Hornet Park. We have credit rescue and recovery happening here at the high school. And we also have some PSAT testing, which is just really exciting for our kiddos over in the intercession here at the high school. So great stuff happening. Our buildings are going to be busy. We have breakfast and lunch being served at Hornet Park as well as the high school and at the middle school. So we're going to have lots of activity. The schools will likely seem like something is different, but you know, there's still a lot of action going on next week and the week following. Secondly, we talked last month about the Department of Homeland Security Secured School Safety Grant application. Just wanted to let you know that we did submit for that. We are very hopeful we should hear by November 1st and that would be a sum total dispersment for security equipment to the tune of $100,000 if that grant is successfully awarded. So our fingers are certainly crossed. We all worked together on that. That was not just me writing that grant, that was everybody working on that sucker. So we are really excited because this would be increasing security at our front doors as well as security cameras at our buildings and that would just really, really help us out. Lastly, Title III grants. You've probably never heard of us talking about the Title III grant because we've never been awarded that grant before. This is the first year in Beech Grove where we have enough English language learner students to qualify for Title III dollars. So we're serving about 150 kiddos who are English language learners in this district and we are now able to have some extra dollars in order to help those boys and girls get better acquainted with the English language. So that's a good thing for the district. That's all I had on my update. Any questions? What's going on? Thank you.
All right then. Stevens?
Just lots of good stuff. First, it's such a privilege to be in this position and I love all these principals over here because they allow me to come in their buildings and snap photos and be a part of all their extra activities. And just like Mr. Buckler said, Trudy Wolf, the homeschool advisor there, is truly precious and wonderful. She has done so many things. She's working on their counseling program right now and has put together an advisory committee, a council that meets regularly and has done those kind of things. And then she was the one that came up with the initiative with the Blue Shirt Day and the Stomp Out Bullying and then it went district-wide, which we were real happy to all of us participate. So those are great things. The father-daughter dance at Hornet Park, I tell you, I got all kind of oozing odds from the papers when I sent them the photos. They're like, oh, those are the cutest pictures ever. So they just, they loved that. And then South Grove's academic night, I mean Stacy just did a phenomenal job. She was fantastic and there were just wall-to-wall people in the hallways and such entertainment and learning taking place. To be able to attend those things are just fantastic, fantastic part of my job. So, and then today, thank you for those of you who got to come to the tree planting and so we did that with FFA and the Greenscape Commission of the City of Beech Grove. Thanks for being there for the homecoming parade and having beautiful little Avery there because he's so adorable. And so that was really great. And thanks also to you guys for volunteering at the Fall Festival booth. So that was great with our FFA kids. That was really wonderful. We continue to have great coverage. In fact, today, the Southside Times called me actually 12 o'clock today and said, we have a hole in our paper for Thursday as far as what story. Do you have something? And I sent back like five different things and besides all the pictures that have already been there for them. And they came out and did the story on tree planting today. So talked about that in MFA and interviewed Chris Kaufman for a story for Thursday. So that's great, so look for that on Thursday. For the foundation, I'm going to be attending the Fall Conference at the end of October, so I hope to bring back some good opportunities for the Beech Grove Education Foundation. And then we're going to hold an online Barnes and Noble fundraiser. It won't be in the store this time, but we'll do it online, so I'll make sure that you get news about that. So lots of exciting things and I'm just happy and privileged to be a part of it.
Okay. We need to approve the minutes of the September 10th board meeting. Would somebody like to make a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
Beth Beechey.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And we need a motion to approve the September 20th board special session minutes.
I motion to approve.
Tammy? Who would second that, please?
I'll second it.
Nancy, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and we have claims. Did everybody go over the claims? Anybody have any questions? Don't put this in there. Could I get a motion to approve those claims, please?
Motion to approve.
And who would like to second those, please?
I'll second them.
Tammy, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Dr. Kingley, you're up, business update.
All right. First item of business is something, you know, I usually do my homework, but on this one, I've really done my homework. So I have a packet of information on transportation. It is about two inches thick here and we've had, how many, two meetings now? People flew in actually out of North Carolina to come see us because the program's kind of nationwide. It's called VersaTrans, it's Tyler Technologies and it is absolutely the next generation of how parents at home, administration, everybody can watch their bus basically on a Google map and know where their child is, what bus they got on, when it's going to arrive, estimated time of arrival. Plus, as our population kind of moves around, whether it's going to an apartment complex or whether it's going to a house, we can take our SDS information and fill it all into this huge computer database and hit generate and it makes the most efficient bus routes possible. I really think this is a neat program. So tonight's not a night where we have to really go ahead and approve it, but I really wanted to open it up for discussion so that if we want to approve it, we kind of do it in a timely fashion, at least by the November board meeting. And so the reason why I told you I've done my homework is because Brian and I feel like we're very confident this is an excellent piece of technology. They keep talking to us about ROI and they keep saying that's a return on investment. And I guess, you know, I don't, I'm not as skilled in the operations area as I would be maybe adding and subtracting numbers and things, but every time a bus idles and it's sitting there, that's money out the tailpipe. They keep telling me that we have a lot of money we could be saving if we just make a more efficient way to do transportation. And there's a number of districts in central Indiana, I think I gave you a long list of about 15 or so that already have VersaTrans. And I wanted to make sure I brought it up yet again because we had talked about it during our special meeting, wanted to bring it up tonight for consideration and conversation, answer any questions you might have or just even invite me to the office if you want to come by and see the tools and see it online. I have a demo that I can kind of run you through and talk to you about, things like that. So if you have any questions about Tyler Technologies or Dr. Kaiser knows about it, it's something we have been kind of investigating for about three years and it's just, I really believe, time to really professionalize our routing, coordination and our communication to our parents, so.
How will it, how will it affect our bus driver, our actual transportation, bus drivers?
Well, yeah, there's a lot of neat pieces to it besides the routing and knowing where the buses are, there's a GPS. It becomes an opportunity to give feedback to bus drivers because the GPS units that are installed on every bus ends up, number one, if we did have an accident, it's kind of like the black box in an airplane. It gives you a lot of data feedback, how fast was the bus going, where was it in the intersection? It gives you very detailed data on that. But it also gives drivers feedback on their tendencies. So if they push the brake too hard too quick and they come to an acceleration or to a stop or an acceleration too fast, like a bus can peel out, sometimes they hit the gas and, you know, go really fast for, just to start it up, it gives a weekly or monthly report on their tendency so that they can kind of look at their graph and see, how am I doing? Charge their time, do they stay on time, are they paying attention to, you know, route by route where they're supposed to be? It also gives me a better accurate idea of how, when a driver is actually on the job and that was something we were struggling with with the time card system and all of that, with the Affordable Care Act and insurance and things like that, that's kind of a consideration. You know, I don't think we're in a position where it would reduce number of routes. I think we're very efficient in terms of route, number of routes we have district-wide, but what it'll do, it'll equalize the number of students on every bus route so that one's not overloaded or to the capacity where one is 70% full. It'll make all routes 88% full across the board. So in every capacity, every way, it's just data processing of location, of kid numbers, of everything to give us efficient use. So I don't anticipate any change in number of drivers, but would it improve our tendencies and will we do? Absolutely.
I've got questions. Well, will this also be used like during sports events and things when the kids are being transported to football games and things? GPS will work, you know, the whole thing?
Yeah, absolutely. It's really nice, it's really nice to know that we could get it started if we had approval. It could get started so that I could have extracurricular trips as you're talking about for sports loaded in there by January 1. Sometimes we bill athletic departments if it's special trips or banned, but other things it does, like, and I'll give you an example, three springs ago, I was at one of the buildings and we got a radio call, the bus is going through Greenfield, there's a tornado in Mount Vernon, how far away are we, what do you want me to do? So I picked up the radio and I said, go to the nearest place for cover. They said, we're on 74. So I called Wayne and it took me five minutes, it took me a little bit of time, but I said, hey, two exits away from me, I found it out, there's an exit, there's a Walmart, pull over, take everybody into, it might have been a Meyer, take everybody into the Meyer. The bus was coming back from King's Island. We got them all in safe, everything was good, but with Tyler Technologies and what we would be able to peek in on, we'd know exactly their GPS location and for bad weather or anything that would come up, a really bad wreck, they would know through the Google map where they are and their, you know, pending problem ahead of them. And so we would know, we could log in and see them and we would have an estimated time of arrival from their location. So it's very much like, what do you call it, the Tom Toms, the various
Garments?
Garments, yeah. It's like a garment, district-wide garment for all of our buses.
My other question is, have they told you what kind of return on investment you get?
They told me that they felt out of our transportation budget, which is $799,000, they anticipate at least $50,000 in the first year. Brian and I estimate from kind of idling and things that we're suspecting, we think that with the routing and even the trips, it will advise us whether a bus driver needs to stay at a, let's say a wrestling meet all day, or if it's more economical for them to come back home, be off the clock for four hours or five hours in the middle of the day and then travel back out to get the team and bring them back. It tells us whether that's economical. We believe that it could be more than the $50,000. Do you agree with that?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I really do. I think that, I think that diesel gas and the prices of gas, especially now with the storm in the Gulf and timing, I think that any fluctuation with gas prices going up, I anticipate the savings.
One of the key, about your
Are there other companies that have programs like this?
Yeah, I looked into three other companies, but they're not, they're more routing software, but it's not comprehensive. Here's a company that does kind of a driver qualification file and they investigate things, but it's very paper-oriented, kind of a file folder system. The two competing companies that are technology-based just are not comprehensive doing the employee piece, the GPS piece, the routing piece and the maintenance. We have a maintenance schedule so that we load in all 27 buses and you know when the oil changed, you know when the last time they got tires, you know the mileage. It reports and sends information maintenance-wise if there was an overheating situation. Wayne in the Transportation Department would know it on his computer because he'd get an email alert, the bus number 23 is overheated today. You'd get a maintenance report. So even though there are some other companies out there, none of them have all the pieces that are connected together, so.
In this, with this system, I mean, is it, is it a, when you say black box, is it something that floods into their existing system and then it records braking, speed limit, does it do arm extensions, things like that as well, or?
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think that it knows that the lights are flashing, the arm's on. However, it does have, we have two types of buses, those that were before 2004 and those after 2004, there's like this difference in the electronic brain
Right.
In the, so two different GPS systems that they understand and they plug it in. So yes, it is a physical device that will be placed on every bus late in November. Then that device is what the communication is to the computer and then yes, it knows, it reads information directly from the engine, from the motor, from the temperature gauges, from all of that is sent into this box and then it communicates that to the computer. But it also does an amazing job of whatever route they're on, it's measuring distance, speed and time between interval places. We also can put on electronic fences, fencing, so that we could actually be alerted anytime a bus would leave, the city district of, you know, the fence, we could put electronic fence fence around a map, and anytime any bus travels outside, let's say of Arlington or of Thompson Road, right? Or, we could put a fence on 465 so that we know exactly when any bus crosses that line, we got a bus going to Perry Township, it's leaving our district. But it's recording all that data, so it is absolutely a brain that's recording incredible amounts of data.
Would it be possible to get a couple numbers of some of the other transportation or another school system to find out how that system is working for them as far as, you know, maintenance issues, you know?
Yeah.
And I'm only asking personally, because I have kind of the same system on my truck, and I had an instance to where there was a bug in my computer system and it would shut down. I'd just be riding down the highway and it would just go, and that's a big problem in Colorado and places where there's hills, because power breaks, power steering.
Yeah.
And I'm not saying that, I love the idea, I just want to make sure that this system that we're getting, other places haven't had those types of glitches.
Tyler, blit, does Decatur Township, is this one they're using on the list?
Clark Pleasant, Center Grove, Greenwood.
Franklin.
Franklin, Franklin Township.
I know, I know what Franklin went to, yeah, I know what Decatur went to.
You don't have Decatur in here, damn.
Those systems are really good as far as, you know, the cost and savings and the efficiencies. One of the biggest things, if you go to Wayne's office, and I'm not saying Wayne's not organized, Wayne, so if you watch this, don't, don't take this wrong, but if, if someone wants to, what route do you do, he has to reach over, grab the file folder, open it up and say, "At this address, this is where you go." Now, the parent can get online, put in their address, put it in, it'll tell them when they go there. So, it's, a lot of the maintenance and things like that are all great, but the biggest thing I see is the parents have instant access on what time the bus is going to be there, where it is, et cetera, et cetera. That's the, you know, from, from my standpoint, the community relations standpoint, that's huge for us.
Twenty-seven school corporations in central Indiana.
How many?
Twenty-seven. And I talked to the, the transportation director who used to be in Franklin Township, and he loves it so much, he now works for Perfect Rains. So, I mean, it is a, it's a growing thing, I don't think it would be in that many school systems if it wasn't just really worth the money to get it up and running.
And, and reason, I put a motion on it, but I also put a caveat, we can not have a motion tonight, that's not a problem. And give Tom, if you have other questions, Tom can look into it. We have things scheduled for Tuesday, November 5th, we can bring it back for final approval there, we're real flexible on it. We like to run these things through twice, but this thing's moved pretty quickly, but so we've got to, if you want to delay not have a motion tonight, or if you want to prove it, just have Tom come back. It's really what you guys feel most comfortable with as a board.
Okay, I think we have a work session November 5th, and then the 12, and then the regular board meeting on the 12th.
Could they like set one up on a bus and let us see a demonstration? Not that, I mean, I think it's totally cool, I, I mean, I'm sure most of us do, but.
No, no, they won't put it on our bus, but they have demos online.
Would they put it on somebody else's?
They have demos online that they can show you.
Okay, all right.
And one of their, what's, it's pretty neat, their trainer lives a mile and a half from our district, and so, he's very accessible for us. So, if, if anybody wanted to come and just meet with Justin.
Tom, you have a suggestion, he wants to come on the 5th?
He could come on the 5th.
Do you guys want to hold off till the 5th, or do you want to go ahead and vote on it?
Well, I've got some stuff to say on that.
Sure.
On the, I'm very familiar with this system.
Okay.
Okay?
Tyler?
Both in civilian world and in combat zones.
Okay.
Okay? So, on the maintenance side of the house, this is definitely going to save us money, because it's going to track everything, and then all you can do is dump it into another file, put it on Excel spreadsheets, and you're going to have a whole maintenance folder on just one bus. It's going to also help with reducing six bus stops on one street.
Right.
Because start, stop, start, stop, that's every place it, wheels aren't running, we're not making money, and if the bus is idling, we're losing money. So, it's going to do everything with your fuel consumption, your maintenance, I mean, he's already said all that. So, you don't have to sell me on that, because I'm, yeah, I'm all for it. The only question I have is, if we get this, if we say, "Yep, we're going to do this," what happens if we don't get a referendum?
It's an annual fee, we, you know, we, if we don't have money to run buses, and, and that's what, three and a half years from now, then we wouldn't have money. It's kind of like having a, an employee in that department, because it is a $15,000 commitment annually.
For how long?
It's an annual, it's just a one year by one year. So, the answer is, it would stop if the buses, wheels on the bus don't go around, then we don't pay the next annual fee.
And I'm confident we're going to win it May 3rd, 2016, but, you know, if for some reason that would take place, then we all have to finish that, that contractual year. So, we're good.
I have one more question. If we have all this data, is this something that our current staff, including Wayne, is he going to be able to process all this data without additional staff to help?
Yeah, part of the transition we talked about a few weeks ago was, we have an employee already, that Charcoals has gone so efficiently and so well that the startup year has gone pretty smooth, and we're much more efficient than we were a year ago today. We saved money in, in, in that area, had better food, all those things going on. So, we have an opportunity to transition one employee to the front desk area of operations. Half, 50% of the job has already been described and explained by me to be a potential data VersaTrans communications person. She's already there. She can do wrap coordination and do wrap coordinating by hand if this isn't approved. However, since she's just starting into the new role, this is a great segue for Beth to be able to handle a whole new transition. She also can be the point person on the telephone when people need to know, "Where's my bus and how do I get here? How do I find this app on my iPhone? How do I figure this out?" She'll be so familiar, she can have a tab in front of her, and she can tell people how, instruct parents how to get to it. So, a month ago, I would have said no, but with our new transition, I think that this is perfect timing for an upgrade.
And, oh, the other thing we're doing, we've had part-time mechanics. You know, when, when, when I got here, Tom had been here for a semester, we had Bill Bain and Wayne were our mechanics, and that just, it doesn't, that doesn't work very well when they're trying to do all that. Bill's, doesn't work as many hours, and, and Wayne spends so much time on paperwork, now it's tough for him to get there. So, we actually are working with another company to outsource for a mechanic. And, and so, we're, because the two part-time mechanics we have have both got full-time jobs in and out there. So, we're in the process of doing that through Macalister, is a discussion, and that'll hopefully take Wayne from out underneath of us. I mean, he, he's the director, he does, I mean, he does everything under the sun. And so, part of this transition, we're working with outsourcing that, which is really good, because, one, it's cost-effective, we don't pay per, and other benefits. And so, we're, we're going into that direction, which, again, I joke about Wayne's office, Wayne's very organized, but this is going to make him much more efficient in what he's able to spend his time on. You know, he's, we're not going to have to type into an Excel spreadsheet like we do right now at Rouse. Right now, we believe in having the old PIN system. And we got a map of Beach Grove, and we have PINs for every bus stop. And, and like Mike said, it's going to make it more efficient. You know, we may not do door-to-door on every kid, but it's still, it's going to increase that, and like you said, stopping and starting on the bus is the most expensive part of it. And, and so, so again, I, I think we're going to be able to handle the staff. The other thing is, we've also talked down the road as we move forward about looking at a data specialist. You know, in our, in our transformation of data and everything we do, we have one person that does it for the whole district. We're not ready to make that recommendation today, but our backup plan, if we feel like we need extra help, we're looking at adding another classified staff person, but that's probably six months, maybe a year down the road before we do that. That's kind of all our transition with what Brian's doing and what Kathy Kratz, Kathy's doing and the stats are. So, we have that kind of a backup, but we think we can handle with Beth Verben and our current staff, plus getting a, a full-time mechanic here, because right now we use two part-time in and out. So, we think our staff can handle it.
Back to the VersaTrans, have you spoke to other school districts that use this?
I'm a parent of another school district that was very pleased with our transportation for the last four years of my children who rode the bus, so I'm very happy with it.
Well, I mean.
I've talked to Justin, I can call around.
Well, and the reason why I'm asking is because there's a lot of add-ons on here. Are there things that, the questions that I would ask are just questions that a normal consumer would want to know. Is there anything that you would add or subtract from your system that you have, and how does it relate to what we're seeing?
I talked, I talked to the principal of Franklin Central, Kevin Kors, gosh, about a couple of years ago, when we were first starting down this road. And as an administrator, what they liked about it was, it was instantaneous. If a parent called in, the secretary at the front desk, "What's your address?", boom. So, it could be done at the building level, they didn't have to send in the transportation to do it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm totally sold on the system. I just want to, I just want to make sure it's a lot of money.
Yeah.
And I want to make sure that we are getting exactly what we need. I understand that we think that we are getting exactly what we need, but we won't know that until we get it, or we.
Yeah, I think we made some phone calls.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of.
Taylor made that to what we needed.
Right, and that's what I'm asking is.
Yeah, and I've asked, is when you look at all the programming, I, the, the things that are in the menu options there are the things that I asked for.
Okay.
It's not, I guess it's not a contract where they supplied something for me for review. I told them, "I want to do the maintenance program because the maintenance program on, on an engine makes sense." I want, and, and so, I, I guess I, I grabbed each of those modules, and as far as pricing as compared to other districts, it's based on fleet number, so, yeah. I, I know the business manager, they age in corporations, so it's not, in fact, I can send them an email to the IASMO District 8, which would encompass probably 18 of the 27 schools maybe, and ask the same question, and I'll have all kinds of good feedback.
Other specific questions you want us to look into, so we can come back on the 4th, on the 5th with more finalized statements?
I'm actually, I'm ready to vote now.
On software upgrades or map overlay upgrades, are they going to get just four-speed that into the system, or are they going to actually have to have somebody come in and put it on our machine?
Yeah, no, we get, that's, that's a great question, because we talked a lot about whether we house the software on our server or whether they virtually house it, and they said it's better if they download, give us the capacity, because we, because we've gone to so much cloud curriculum now, we have some empty ServerBlade servers.
ServerBlades?
ServerBlades, you know, the big, whatever, they used to be called main, you know, pieces. We have a lot of empty space now, and he told me that it's better for us to own our own, we get the stuff, we plug it in, and Tim Russler, I had him in the meeting, technology director, and he, he was sold, is that the impression you got? They didn't want it to be owned and housed in some computer off-site, they wanted us to own it and house it here.
And then, when upgrades come, it'll simply be a call from their tech guy to Tim, and just be like, you know, "Accept this file, upload like this," be about 15-minute process, right?
And I think at midnight, like every other day, when, when, this is really neat, when students are enrolling and going out, it communicates directly to our student data system, and it updates itself every two nights. So, when we get a new student, we get that new route, it's already, it's already populating that, and then it's generating notifications, "Hey, bus number 27, you got a new student starting Monday, pick him up."
Now, is this going to require manual backups, weekly, monthly, biennially?
We back up our service, we back them up on a nightly basis.
Nightly basis?
Yeah, we have the whole system that does that.
Well, like I said, you know, I, I have a similar, not nearly as complex as this on my personal truck, and it's, it's saved me fuel unbelievably, because it records, with mine, it records my tire pressure and things like that. But, you know, the only thing that I, you know, and again, knowing what I know now about my system, I wish that I would have called somebody else up instead of just relying on the information that the salesperson was giving me, you know, and said, "Hey, you know, if you could change something, or if you would have done something differently, what would you have added or not had on your system?" That's the only thing, but I'd say otherwise, I, I feel comfortable with voting tonight for it, if, if you will, you know, make sure that.
I think it looks like, it sounds like you're doing your homework, like you said.
Yeah.
And, and I don't want to be the guy that holds back people up on getting trained on this. The sooner we get it implemented, the sooner we can start saving money, so.
Can I make a suggestion that the board approve it tonight, but Tom will still follow up? We won't necessarily, are we assigning contractors, Janice?
Um, sorry.
Regardless, what we could do is.
I think I, I think it's just my.
We can go ahead and get some of those questions answered, have the approval, but before we actually finalize and sign the documents, Tom will make some follow-up phone calls and emails. That'll be pretty simple to follow up. Again, this is, you know, since my day at Noblesville, we put this in at Noblesville back in about 2003, and it was one of the earlier versions of it, they just made generation, generations of improvement in it. And you'll see a lot of large school districts that are saving, we talk about money back there, saving thousands and thousands of dollars, and we're pretty confident, you know, the money savings are wonderful, but I'll go back and say the efficiencies, the safety of the buses, you know, if there's an issue with the bus, we're going to know about it. Right now, it's, well, the bus driver heard something, and now we're going to have diagnostic things going on and on. It's really going to take us to another level, especially as we're bringing a new mechanic, you know, they're going, we're going to be able to know right away, "Hey, we got to address this, we got to address this." We think it'll, our best inspections are always top-notch, but it's going to make it easier to even prepare for the bus inspections, because, you know, we're a data-driven district now, we're going to have data on our, on our, our buses that help us more efficiently, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract with VersaTrans pending Mr. Keely's further investigation of add-on.
I'll send you an email with feedback.
Nice second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
No, I, no, in, in fact, there, one of the reasons why I'm not as, to inspect it, I know the business managers of each, when I look at the companies on here, there's some pretty serious business manager on there that.
And, and I know we discussed this last month as well, so I don't want everybody to think that we're just given this today and then we're asked, being asked to, to vote on it. We, we explored this last month.
Right.
You know, and.
Yep. I'll ask the question, it's good, good feedback. All right. 2014 budget, city schools' entire budget was advertised and new, two newspapers. We did complete our public hearing in September. I went through PowerPoint, talked about our numbers, talked about our funds, talked about our levy, told you it was based on a $300 million assessed valuation, which then raises the rate, thus providing the opportunity for the Department of Local Government Finance to reduce our budget to kind of the statutory limits. And we do that on purpose. We advertise high, because if you don't ask for enough, you'll never get that much, right? So, you have to ask for enough, and then they'll bring us down to kind of our level. So, I've done all that, and included in your packet are the numbers, they have not been changed, one iota from what was in the newspaper, what was in the public hearing, and then what is proposed for you tonight. Tonight is our opportunity to answer any final questions on that. If there are no questions, I'm prepared to put my entire packet, it's about 200 pages worth of documentation and information, and I'd like to present that to the DLGF by this Friday. So, tonight is our opportunity to pass the Beach Grove City Schools budget for the calendar year 2014.
We adopt the 2014 budget for all funds presented.
Nice second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
It's important that I have the opportunity to reduce numbers in the budget in accordance with what our actual expenditures are, so I've asked for a resolution to reduce those dollars. It also comes in the form of something called a 1782 notice next spring. I need the opportunity to look at those numbers along with Dr. Kaiser and make assumptions. The tax rate's a little too high, we'll reduce this number, things like that. Transfer interest income into the general fund, I balance funds, that's what I do. And then, to specifically deobligate, because of our circuit breaker, some of the numbers are high that they gave us for 2013. I need to lower those numbers going into 2014, so we weren't overly inflated going into 2014. So, there's a lot of budget number shaking and movement, and these are all called resolutions that give me the authority. that give me the authority to work those numbers to finish out the year this year, and also in calendar year 2014. And so, those are all listed there for a motion for me to balance all those numbers.
Will you, will you explain, I know all of this except, explain a little bit the budget pension bond tax neutrality resolution? That one's-
It's a crazy one, and it is very complicated. Pension bond was drafted in 2004, 2003, 2004. We had a large retiree population, we owed them money in their pensions, and we did unfunded liability. Had to get rid of that, so we floated this big bond. We owe money on that bond for things, you know, for moving forward to about 2020. Since we have that moving forward, we really need, statutorily at that time, the state of Indiana gave you a one-time opportunity to fund those pensions. When you did that, you weren't allowed to raise the local tax rate higher than what you advertised for other things. So, to neutralize, we raised the bus replacement the exact amount that we needed reduced to equal the pension bond fund. We've done this consecutively for the last 10 years, and it is a funding formula that is told that we have to do, statutorily by the Indiana, this one-time funding. And so, it's a neutrality resolution, and all we're asking is that we would like to take the tax that we set for bus, that we know we're not gonna get for buses anyway. We advertised for it, and we're gonna move it over and fill it in for the pension bond to neutralize that tax rate. Thus called the Pension Bond Tax Neutrality Resolution. And it's all by, in that resolution, it has Indiana code, 21-15-4, you know, it's got these numbers, and it's all kind of a convoluted thing. The nice thing that you'll want to know, in the next three years, it's phasing out. You won't be allowed to do it. So, it'll be a new point in two more years, and you won't be able to do it anyway.
And equally as important, and you'll see coming up here in a couple motions, the Indiana bond bank, they, from time to time, we can refinance debt and lower our payments. So, we just got the paperwork today, so you'll see here in a minute, we're going to refinance our pension bonds to the bond bank and save about how much per year, think?
If you averaged it out over 15 years, it's about $30,000 a year savings every year. But they kind of have it structured in a strange way, where it's a kind of a nice way. We have less, quite a bit less here on the front end, and then we get back to a normal payment in about 12 years, so.
So, again, and we'd like to give you a heads up on that, but we have two things laying from the attorneys today. One was a rainy day resolution, and Tom will talk about it in a moment, and also restructuring pension bonds. But again, those are our legal resolutions that we do on an annual basis that we have to have approved, so.
Can somebody make a motion to approve those resolutions, please? Or do you have any questions? Any more questions? Okay, sorry, Tim.
I'm ready to motion.
Okay. Second. Beth, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And I'm only each resolution individually signed.
You want, oh, you have each signed?
Yeah.
I'm supposed to say I don't have to have a motion for each?
No, you don't. And then, next, Section 125 is a federal program to allow all of our employees to have their health insurance premiums, pre-tax dollars instead of after-tax dollars. By law, everybody has to meet with our Section 125 representative. We revised the plan to change our plan year, so now it will run from February to February each year. We did that because we changed our health savings and our health insurance plan years from, to January to January. So, that revision forces a Section 125 plan document change, and with your approval, I can then be the trustee of that, and I can sign on your behalf. So, I'd like to change the Section 125 plan.
Beth? All in favor?
Aye.
We went to the DUAB in July, had a really very positive, constructive meeting in front of the Department of Local Government and the State Budget Agency during that meeting. They went through all of our information, and they did put forth a resolution that said we were fiscally sound and we're doing a nice job. However, we were not allowed to restructure our debt. But in that conversation, they do want to provide for us, for cash flow purposes and to pay the bills, a one-time-only $2 million rainy day loan from the State Budget Agency, the SBA. This is unique. It is a very low-interest, 1% interest loan, and a one-time lump-sum dump into our cash flow, into our accounts. In all respects, that is a wonderful thing for us, because it could provide the opportunity for us maybe to not have to fill out tax anticipation warrants and do some other things for cash flow, but also because of the circuit breaker, if we did have an emergency, or a bill, or a problem here in the next two years, we would have kind of that rainy day loan of our own that we could pay for a roof problem or other problems. Thursday morning at 9:00 a.m., we have a meeting in Muncie, Indiana, in front of the State Budget Agency to have final approval of that loan. In doing that loan, it's been a very quick turnaround in the last three weeks, that's why we haven't really talked about it too much, but it's all pending from the last year that we've been talking about, the distressed unit appeals board, the DUAB. So, this is kind of the culmination of a year's worth of work to have $2 million provided to us. So, I have a loan agreement in front of me here, dated 15th of October 2013. We are the borrower, and the state of Indiana is the state budget agency that would provide the $2 million for our school corporation.
And Tom, I believe we also have a resolution from Jane, that's also part of this, that we got today at 3:00. So, we really haven't any chance to get it in Dropbox, do we get it?
Everybody has a copy of the pension bond resolution?
That's the last one. This is, this is just called the rainy day loan.
Okay, I have a question. So, we get this $2 million loan, do we only get charged interest for what we use? Or is this, here's your $2 million, could advantage or words you want to do with it?
It's more advantageous. They will give us to, they will deposit it into a fund-
Okay.
-in a lump sum. We can then use that money. Money's available, state law says money's available, can pay it back, using that money. It is a vehicle for emergency funding and revenue expenditures that could be used. Oh, it doesn't, there's no payout airtime, there is a five-year payback period, but it fills all the holes of any potential problem. We used to get money without a circuit breaker problem. We used to get eight to nine to $10 million a year. We're now down to 6.6. We don't have the cash flow in our funds to float bad times and good times. So, our bank accounts get, in the end, the state of Indiana also only deposits money, gives us revenue for tuition on the 15th of every month. And because we're now on a payment schedule instead of a lump-sum schedule, the cash flow for all school corporations across the state of Indiana is incredibly difficult. So, we will get charged interest on the full amount.
Okay, can, and I'm just asking this, you mean, never first ask for it. Can you take this money and put it in a savings account and make money off it?
That is an arbitrage calculation, it's a federal process-
You're really not supposed to do that.
-that you're really not supposed to do, but you wouldn't want to do it right now, because investments, the return on investments is .22, .4 of a percent. So, if we're getting charged interest at one, years ago, back in the 90s and in early 2000s, arbitrage was a huge calculation by the IRS, because people did exactly what you said. They could take their $2 million, put it in investment, earn 4%, pay the government back one, and make money. Well, market conditions are not in a situation where that's advantageous for our school corporation.
Or is it investing? I was just thinking about putting it in a savings account.
Yeah, well, I, I do have Fifth Third Bank sweep our account every night, and we do have dollars going into a reserve account. So, we already have that going on. But even that, and Brian can really attest to this, we had, used to have lump-sum dollars. And two years ago, I asked you if we could take our rainy day amount and put it in Huntington Bank. Well, then, six to nine months ago, I asked you, "I need the money back," and we liquidated our Huntington account. This is the symptom of that liquidation of the Huntington account, and we were only earning a quarter percent anyway. So, this is a positive for us, and it will help us with emergency cash flow for the next two years. It's a nice Band-Aid for the next two years, and in that time, it will allow us to really look at circuit breaker issues.
I would, I want to emphasize, we're not, Mount Vernon applied for this and got turned down last week.
Right.
They looked at it, said, "You're, you're fiscally sound, we know there's a cash flow issue because of drop in circuit breaker and property tax." You know, it used to be, we had a lot of cash balance in our accounts. Well, those have eaten away. So, what this does for us, you know, we'd like to say, "Well, we can, we can borrow less money from the bond bank," but we really won't know that until later. But what, it truly is a rainy day, but, you know, we're not borrowing this, that we're gonna go out and spend.
Right.
But it does truly become an emergency loan, and at 1% interest. If we had to go out to a local bank and borrow, we would not get 1%. So, it gives us a sense on a three-paid month, it just gives us some flexibility, but our goal is not to spend it. We'll actually turn around and start paying itself back with the money that we have as it, as it comes to. Yeah, there is some interest involved, but I know for Tom and I and Brian, who live and die with this, it, it gives us a little bit of sleeping ability, not worrying about some things.
Yeah, and that's really what it is. This is the, this is a security blanket as we move forward. Maintenance issues, if something were to happen right now, we don't have the capacity to go out and get a million dollars to save, you know, the pool deck roof, or, we don't have that. This money sitting in an account is truly the safety, the safety net for the entire Beach Grove City Schools for the next two to three to five years if we don't spend it at all. So, it really is a good, it is a very good positive thing.
The mayor earlier had said that our AV is poised to increase next year. Are you approaching, are you approaching next year as the way it has been declining, or are you looking at the trends?
Yeah, as we work with a company called, guy's name's Bill Sheldrick, Policy Analytics, he tells us it'll be up, but it'll be up 1%. So, we are flat, we are just-
Flat still?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna just, because for five years, getting going down, five to 8%, we will be happy if it just stays flat. So, I'm anticipating the 2014 budget being exactly where we are in 2013, because it wouldn't improve it for me to anticipate anymore, and that's another reason why the rainy day loan is quite possibly one of the best things that we could have done in the last six months or so.
And one thing, the mayor has some insight, that as good as Bill Sheldrick does, he's looking at about home values-
Right.
-more than new businesses coming in.
Right.
And so, it's good to hear the mayor talk about that, and some other things that are gonna be taking place are real positive for us as we move forward, but we're still gonna stay pretty conservative from that standpoint. You know, home values are starting to inch up, you know, they've dropped across the board in most cases, so that's good if you're selling your house, but, so we're optimistic about that. I truly believe that downtown Beach Grove renovation is gonna spur some people moving into those businesses and generating some more people moving into the district, et cetera, et cetera, so.
I hear this is a great place to have ice cream on Main Street.
Yes.
Against the law for me to promote any type of name business?
Yeah.
I'll just say there's some really good ice cream on Main Street.
Strawberry Milkshake are wonderful.
Yes.
I have one a week, so.
It's an addiction.
Yes.
I move away from the rainy day loan through the DUAB process.
One second. Tammy, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And the last thing, we were contacted by the Indiana Bond Bank and our friends at Ice Miller, Attorneys at Law, who are our bond counsel, to be notified kind of out of the blue, to be quite honest with you, in September, that interest rates were at a premium amount around 3%, which would be a percentage and a half lower than what our pension bond closed at back in 2003, 2004. So, they want to refinance for us, thus saving us 30, approximately $30,000, $38,000 annually for the next 15 years. And so, these are people who, we didn't go out to the marketplace and look, and they're poised, in a position to watch and help us when something like this comes about. So, us, along with maybe six other, five, six other school corporations, are in the same, kind of the same debt issue at the same time, and they'd like to help us to restructure the Indiana Bond Bank's pension neutrality loan, or pension loan that we have right now, pension bond. So, I'd like permission to do that, and that will take a legal process over the next four weeks, so I can inform you of that as well.
Well, that's kind of an easy one, since we're gonna be saving money, like to approve that.
I'll make a motion for that.
Second.
Was it Rick, was that you?
Yes, ma'am.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Personnel? That's a short one this year.
Yeah, I just gave you a resume, and I'm not approving any personnel, so I just gave that to you to look over, because-
Do you not need to approve it?
No.
Okay.
Sorry, done. Thank you.
Mr. Tom Michael, nice to see you. You look very nice in your suit.
I try. It's from high school, though. Past three or four years, we've had Service Cube clean Hornet Park South Grove Middle School, and the way Service Cube's set up is there's basically kind of a sub-leasee that does its cleaning at different school corporations. And ours has been Mr. Voku for the past few years, and we've been extremely happy with him. There's some different business issues that have gone on between Mr. Voku and Service Cube, basically, to where he has decided to leave the parent company. And within his contract, he has no anti-compete clause, so he's allowed to do such a thing. And he has come to us to ask if he could keep our contracts. With the blessing of our principals, they would like to keep the same cleaning that they've had, because they've been happy with his people, they've been happy with him, they've been his main contact for the past year or two now, and they would really like to keep that. With Service Cube, they basically came to us and through talking to them, they are no longer able to clean South Grove Middle School contractually once Mr. Voku leaves. So, he would like to waive his 30 days. However, at Hornet Park, which we found out after we gave this to you, he would like to honor the 30 days in the contract, so that contract would not take place till November 1st. The other two, South Grove Middle School will take place post-day October 1st effect, to where DV Clean, which is Mr. Voku's company, would start cleaning those schools. Our principals, our staff, students would see absolutely zero change. It's gonna be the same people in their building, same cleaning they've had for the past multiple years now. So, on our end, we'll see nothing, it's really just a title change on the company side.
No change in fee, no change in-
The fees are actually a little bit lower, I mean, very nominal. It's basically the exact same contract, I mean, since there was no anti-compete clause, it's almost a copy and paste.
Principals, you're happy with that? Yes? Yes?
I-
Central has its own. High School has a local cleaner, pristine clean, which is Chris Weller. And then, Little School would be the only one that actually would have DV Clean there.
I got an email from all three principals.
They're happy?
We're satisfied, all three were. Dan, look it. There is one nice piece to this as well. He does have new machinery to do floor cleaning, carpet cleaning, and a brand-new, high-powered wax, kind of a burnishing, you know, wax machine that just sounds awesome. So, he's gonna enter into some trials over fall break, Christmas break, spring break, whether or not we want to employ him even in the summertime to do some floor cleaning, and we have been lacking in that a little bit. So, I'm interested in that, how that progresses, and I've asked Brian to be the lead on that floor care program.
And then also, these contracts are only through the end of the calendar year. That way, as he changes, we can, you know, address everything, make sure it goes smoothly, since it's kind of a new venture on his end as well. And then, January 1, we'll resign for another calendar year, if everything goes well.
Could you tell Mr. Voku mercy?
I mean, that's pretty Voku.
Pretty sure he's big Russian.
Yeah, big.
That was my only fresh word that I knew.
Would you like to make a motion for it?
I'll make a motion for it.
Tim? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Hold, bids. Does anybody else want to talk about these? We have donations for Central Elementary School from donorschoose.org, Target, and Teachers Treasures. Who would like to make the motion to accept those donations? Do we need to talk about them first? Good things we're gonna need to talk about.
I motion to approve the donations.
Sammy?
I'll second.
Beth, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then, we have a motion to approve an overnight field trip for the Jubileers to Butler. And then we have a motion to approve an overnight field trip for the Jubileers to Butler. Sounds like fun. Would like to make a motion for that, please.
I'll make a motion for that, please.
Rick?
I'll say it.
Tim, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion to approve the fundraisers as presented, does anybody have any questions about those before we? And there is additional one in your packet back here that we didn't have for the high school for the swim team. It's in the back of your packet, very last page. Just wanted you to see that one too, so that's included in this group of fundraisers.
I do approve the fundraisers as presented.
Beth?
I'll say it then.
Tim, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Do we need to go with the meeting dates?
No, I think you have those. We've got a couple work sessions in November, we have quite a few topics to discuss, some performance targets for our administrative team, just a lot of stuff, so.
Anybody have any questions? Success stories, anything they want to add?
I'd like to give a special thanks to Robin. Robin continues to work with all our new policies and guidelines, and what's really great, she does all the work and then comes back to me, and we now have board policies that are updated, we'll continue to update those. Now she's working on administrative guidelines with Damon Pew, who's a retired superintendent for Wall Bash and some other places. So, so again, we can get that up in a digital format. What's really great about having them online, you can go in and put in a topic and it'll go right to a board policy for you. So, like transportation, we're getting into the 21st century, so a special thank you to Robin for that, and appreciate her hard work with it.
Yes?
I've got, not a successor, I've got some questions I would like to present to the Some of you may or may not be aware that we have a very bad traffic issue at Fifth and Albany. It's been addressed to the city council twice, to my knowledge. I personally sat at that stop for a week in September from 7:30 in the morning till 8:10, and recorded 87 rolling stops and 45 no stops. That's a very busy intersection, there are a lot of kids there waiting for the bus in the morning, so I am going to say that we, as a school board, should present something to Department of Public Works to either get a side crosswalk painted at that intersection, or maybe even looking at getting a traffic guard at that intersection. It's a, it's a big issue, and it seems that it's going nowhere, the police can only do so much, there's only so many of them to go around, but I think we owe it to our kids to make sure that they're safe as we only can be. And then my last concern was... Nope, I already read that, never mind, sorry.
Do you think that the giant apartment building sitting there has something to do with the distraction of the stop signs, or you just think?
Oh, no, stop signs are, I mean, you know, a complete stop is your vehicle comes to a stop for three seconds. And, you know, if your wheels are still rolling even though you stopped, that's a rolling stop, that can be ticketed. Is it ticketed? Sometimes it is, sometimes it isn't, but, I mean, there was twice that the bus arm was out and the car just went through going west as the bus was facing east, and, you know, we need to do something at that intersection.
Mike, I can follow, I can follow up with the mayor and talk about what possible is, I know, talking to Mark Parker, that they have officers there, of course, with the officers there, people stop.
Right.
It's, if they're not there, they just kind of roll through because it's in an area where, you know, they just think they can, they can move through it.
It was presented again at the council by one of the parents that's concerned about it, and I suggested to her that maybe we, as the school, could, you know, approach DPW because that's who it would fall under, Department of Public Works, get a crosswalk painted in there, or, you know, does Beach Grove own it, or does Indianapolis own it? Indianapolis says Beach Grove owns it, Beach Grove says Indianapolis owns it. We drive our school buses there and our kids are there, so we need, again, we need to do something to make sure that we've taken all the steps to make sure that they're safe.
Okay. Some of the sports, fall sports are coming up on their senior, their senior nights, and I want to take this time, and I will throughout the year, to thank all those seniors, high school seniors that have taken a lot of time out of their personal schedule. I know that, you know, that a lot of times, these kids forego weekends with their boyfriends and girlfriends, and fun times to, to stick their neck out for our school and our community, and I want to thank them all for that, so if this is your last fall for a sport, thank you very much, and if you have other ones coming up, then good luck and hope you have an enjoyable senior year.
Would I kind of make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Bye.